Okay, so a warm welcome to our Physical Sciences Town Meeting today. It's great that so many people could come up and find out what the Physical Sciences Programme has been doing. So I guess what I want to kind of obviously talk through is some of the things that we've been up to as a team. I appreciate there's probably a lot of nervousness about the kind of concept of shaping, so hopefully we're going to go through some of that as well today. What I'd like to also go across is that obviously we've been working very closely with the Physical Sciences Programme over the last three and a half years while I've been leading this programme, so hopefully there's an element of trust that's been built up between the programme and the community over that time, and I think a lot of what we're doing is taking forward and we will continue to work with that trust as we carry on. Okay, so let's start off with the summary because that's probably the best thing you need to do to take away from this presentation. So EPSRC is an organisation that continually engages with the community, that's both academic and the industry representative stakeholders, but it's a process that hopefully many of you will recognise that's not just happened over the last two months but something that's been happening for many years. So as a programme or as a theme, Physical Sciences has brought together a number of different advice streams and information sources, and so that's been really setting the framework for the future of our funding. I haven't funded a single grant yet in this portfolio, it's just a framework. Clearly there's been some focus on some of the areas and the decisions we've taken, but I'd want to get across to you that the decisions have to be taken in terms of a broader context, and that's part of the role of EPSRC to balance the different needs across the portfolio. I want to get across that setting priorities for EPSRC is not new, and we've got some examples of things that we've done in the past. And clearly, as we've said, when we've engaged with some of the learning societies and when we've been talking to our strategic partners, both at university and industry level, we continue to welcome evidence as part of this ongoing process. So some of the slides some of you will have seen, some of the slides are the same that might have gone through with my strategic advisory team, but there are also some new slides as well, so hopefully there's something for everyone. But this one is something that we've been using as part of putting the shaping programme together, just to really reflect that actually the world is changing, there continues to be a lot of economic uncertainty, there are a number of global challenges out there, and I can just think of the ones that are important in terms of our portfolio, in terms of the energy, healthcare, global uncertainty, they're all important areas that research needs to contribute to, and one thing that is not changing is that EPSRC has a responsibility to fund research in the next 10 to the 50 year timeframe. In terms of the final statement, you know, whilst EPSRC is setting out a framework, it still continues to be an important time to work together, and clearly I think through peer review and the research proposals that will be submitted, we will continue to work together. So thinking about the scientific landscape in 2011, so really big success is that the UK continues to be the most productive country in terms of citations achieved per pound invested, that's a real achievement. But the second bullet point is kind of some of the issues that we're facing against is that actually we form less well against competitive countries in terms of overall volumes of publications, there are still a lot of research publications out there and science that doesn't get cited from the UK base. Equally, there are other countries that are upping their game in terms of their research investment, we know some of the big investments being made in China, South Korea, Brazil and Russia, and the share of global citations is also changing, which is illustrated on this next slide, which shows that if I can just point out that the UK is the kind of the blue blob here. And over these two reporting periods, the share of EPSRC citations has relatively remained stable, which again is a good thing, but the red chunk, which I think is the States, is significantly contracting, and there are some other areas that are actually significantly growing. So whilst we're kind of keeping our head above water, we need to think about how best to use our investments. I'm not going to read this whole slide because it will be on the web at some point, but just to go through our governance in terms of our organisation, so many of you will appreciate that our senior decision-making body is council, it's responsible for determining our policy priorities and strategy, and they're appointed by ministers. We also have an internal resource audit committee which kind of looks at efficiency and kind of, as it says on the tin, audits parts of the process just to make sure they're robust. In terms of a wider academic and industrial community, we now have a newly formed strategic advisory network, that's replaced the former Technical Opportunities User Panel and Society Issues Panel. And then all the themes have strategic advisory teams with a much more focused set or representative of the research community, and I spend a lot of time discussing issues and working through some ideas that we have as part of that process. And just to be clear, that council was at the centre of the scoping of the current EPSRC strategic plan and delivery plan, so the priorities and the goals set out were clearly signed off by council. We work very closely with council about the approach for shaping, which was not to take a wide consultation but to use our unique position to put together the evidence and test recommendations with members of the SAT and key representatives of the community. And the actual exemplars were tested, not the actual areas themselves, but exemplars about the approach used were also tested with council. So unless you've been in a hole and not looking at anything that EPSRC has been doing, these are the three goals that EPSRC has set out in its current strategic plan. So shaping capability, which of course is the main issue that we're thinking about today, but equally we need to be thinking about developing leaders and delivering excellence with impact. And of course the three are interrelated, you can't do one without the other, so in terms of some of the shaping decisions we made, we're also thinking about what that means in terms of the leadership and the culture within the research community, and clearly we've got some excellent impact that's being demonstrated by our researchers, and I think one of the key things we want to do, and I think to use some of the words of my SAT, is we need to make it smarter. We're not trying to come up with new areas that we haven't thought about and second-guess things, but some people do it very well, and how can we share that best practice to make sure more people do it better? So in terms of the landscape, this is something, as I said at the beginning, is an ongoing process, and so I could go back many years, but I'll start at 2009. In 2009 EPSRC published its EPSRC landscapes, it had SWOT analysis in there, it had our key research groups, it had our studentship investment areas there as well, and so that started back in 2009, and that went on the web, and we had opportunities for people to give us feedback, and certainly when I went out at my community visits, clearly it would have been published at the time we went out into the community. And then you can see along in the timeline there that we had the development of the strategic plan, the delivery plan that was then formed once we had our comprehensive spending view settlement, and finally we started publishing our portfolio in July 2011, and there's obviously a commitment as stated on the web that that will be completed by March 2012. And underneath on there, it's quite clear to say there's been ongoing engagement throughout that process. So this is the new style of the portfolio that we're being presented, which in the heart of it where it says mathematical sciences, engineering, physical sciences and ICT is the national capability, that's the core research, and that's where the bulk of my research funding will continue to be invested. You can see routes outside on the rings are actually the challenge themes for you to read there, and clearly encompassing all that and actually quite challenging at the moment is the importance of infrastructure, where we have severe limitations at the moment on those investments. So this slide is really basically to say, well, what have we done as EPSRC employees in terms of understanding the current portfolio? So we've been looking at the value of EPSRC support in the research area, we've been looking at the number of people receiving support in that area, we've been looking at some of the major investments that have previously been made, and obviously we've been looking at the links between the current area for physical sciences and the broader capability and challenge themes. So it's really important, I think, moving forward, and the intention of council is not just to think of physical sciences as a physical sciences programme, it's what physical sciences also underpins some of the other capability themes in engineering and ICT, mathematical sciences, but also what is physical sciences doing to actually contribute to energy, to healthcare, digital economy, et cetera. And as part of that, we've been working very closely with our university partners as well. So in actually thinking about, well, what makes a good portfolio, we've been thinking in terms of three kind of dimensions, in terms of the quality of the portfolio, the importance of the portfolio, and the capacity of the portfolio. So here are some examples that we've been using as part of that kind of framework. So international standings, so examples here could be where something might win a Nobel Prize for example, or his publications in high citation journals, where there's potentially an area of research that has a very disruptive potential, where there's a unique capability for the UK, and so you might think of something like anti-hydrogen in this section here, something that the UK excels at, and there's a very small research team working on that. Clearly the impact in the UK economy, science does have a global impact, but as a taxpayer we have to think first about what might be to the benefit of the UK, and clearly energy, healthcare and global uncertainty and all the challenge themes, we need to think about, well, what is it contributing to the UK? And of course the fact that there are other benefits to a global research activity is fantastic. We need to think about how we enable future and emerging industries, so for example graphene here is something that we don't have a clue about where that's going yet, we've got some fantastic research going on there, and we now need to think about working to see whether actually it can be made a reality into something that delivers good returns for the UK investment. Whether they are contributing to other societal challenges, and particularly for physical sciences, to what extent it's a key underpinning research area, so for example much of my portfolio is very important for BBSRC, STFC, MRC and NERC as well. But we also have to think about the current size of EPSRC investment, how much have we actually got to spend on some of these research areas, we need to think about what else is being spent in that area that's not through EPSRC, and clearly we have to think about what the user needs are. So our approach has clearly been articulated, and it's on the web for you to see, it might not be as obvious, you actually have to click on the previous screen on the 'our approach' text to actually see all this, I wouldn't want you to think there's just like a two-liner, which is what the introduction on the previous webpage says, but there's a lot of detail on the approach here. So I'm just going to walk you through some of the knowledge and evidence that we have used. So what is it? So here we have funding data, reports and reviews, grand challenges, strategic university discussions, business views, engagement with learning societies and the ongoing engagement of EPSRC. So I've shown this, so the next few slides to my SAT, they were presented at the Standing Conference of Physics Professors, and also we showed them to the RSC Science Policy Board. And so the point of this slide here is really to kind of understand where we are at the moment, which is an important starting place. So this is all in relation to the Physical Sciences Programme, so the positioning of these other themes, areas should be in the context of physical sciences and not necessarily between the other theme areas. But this is representing individual researchers that we support, and whether they get their funding currently from both Physical Sciences Programme and the other thematic programmes in the portfolio. You can see there's quite a lot of overlap with engineering and with ICT, and that's probably not surprising because we have a strong chemistry, chemical engineering portfolio, and the way the materials funding is distributed, there's clearly strong overlap with the ICT programme and applications. But what is very interesting is there is very little overlap between physical sciences and the manufacturing programme, and particularly with the energy programme, there's this little tiny wedge down here which is the kind of the overlap between physical sciences and energy. Now that's not to say that there aren't people working in both portfolios, but that's how our current portfolio looks, and I think gives us cause to question about is that the best way to encourage the underpinning research in the challenge areas as well as the main national capability areas as well. So this is the physical sciences blobs that some people may or may not have heard about, so this is really just trying to look at our current funding and actually think about, well, how does the landscape look? And so here, these are clusters of sub-themes, so these aren't specifically a certain group of sub-themes, but we try to do it in a stylistic way to give a representation of the portfolio. But here we have, and over this kind of third here is the chemistry investment with physical chemistry, synthetic chemistry, analytical sciences, we have our physics contribution here in terms of plasmas and lasers, atomic molecular condensed matter physics, biophysics, et cetera, and then we have our materials investments over here as well, where we've got materials for energy, functional ceramics, et cetera. So that gives you the current portfolio, that's been taken from data on grants on the web, we've just tried to put it across it in a visual way for you. Difficult to read, but you will be able to look at these in more detail, so this is then plotting the major research investments in that portfolio, like programme grants and critical mass grants, I'm not sure if they're all on here, but actually they show you that there are some areas that are very well served by some strategic investments, there are some areas like condensed matter physics, analytical sciences and catalysis for example, where there are little strategic investments in the portfolio as currently supported. Of course fusion is actually outside of this funding envelope here. So clearly this is starting to get a picture about where some of our research groupings are. The next thing we've done is we've looked at our fellowship portfolio, and unsurprisingly for physical sciences, there's a very even distribution of fellowships amongst the portfolio, that's a good thing, and I'm sure you will recognise that in your departments, but again, it's important to show that we actually know and analyse this. So here you can see, and the different symbols relate to either both the current fellowships or the previous fellowships that we support. But the most important question is, again, is that the right distribution when we need to think about the capability of the research landscape? And finally, we've been looking at our postgraduate training portfolio, again, work that we started prior to the spending review outcome, but it was important, we already thought at the time to think about what was the relationship of our research training portfolio to the research portfolio. Clearly we also need to understand the different types of postgraduate training, so this represents our doctoral training grant, postgraduate training, our centres for doctoral training, our project studentship training and industrial case training. And so here you can see there are different sizes and levels of investment of training across the portfolio, and the circles indicate where there are centres for doctoral training in those portfolios. The thing that I don't think has been added to this slide yet is that I think there are now some LSI doctoral training centres that are also now part of the physical sciences theme. So let's talk about reports and reviews. So as I said when I was going around to the community in 2009, 2010, that the physical sciences has been very privileged, you might argue, some might say very unfortunate, that we've been reviewed to death. So we've had a chemistry international review, we've had a materials international review, we've had an RC UK WACM review of physics. So these have clearly kind of given us lots of evidence and opinions about the portfolio, and most recently there's been the RC UK review on energy. Both the chemistry and physics, both the chemistry materials, sorry, reviews have formulated action plans that we have taken forward as a council, and so clearly some of the actions that we've been doing follow very much on from some of the issues raised in those international reviews. There are clearly many other streams of evidence, so there's been the research assessment exercise, the particular this subject reviews that all the panels came up with, we've been looking at some other international reports that are out there that we've been highlighted to us, like the directing matter and energy, which are five grand challenges. We've talked about the landscapes, we've been working with the Royal Society of Chemistry with their CO3, and that's led to, I think, three reports, the third one which happened a couple of weeks ago, where a colleague of the team was in China as part of that, there's the RSC kind of roadmap on the chemistry for tomorrow's world, we did a review with nuclear physics and nuclear engineering with STFC, and there's also a review from the nanoscience portfolio. And I could go on, but there are quite a number of reports out there that we take into consideration, and clearly there are training issues as well, so we've been working on the VITI reports about what researchers do, and clearly with organisations like the TSB and Biz thinking about sort of some of their advanced material strategies. Not one of those reports will highlight a particular research area about whether it should be a grow, maintain or reduce, but contextually there's lots of information in there which EPSRC has a kind of a role in bringing that together. So in terms of community engagement, Physical Sciences has been working very closely with the community on some grand challenges. So these were community consultations, if I think back to the chemical sciences and engineering grand challenge, we had an opportunity for all universities to submit approximately 130, I think we received, of potential ideas for grand challenges, we had a very open community-driven workshop, and that's for the chemistry, for physics, we had a web survey that followed on from an advisory team meeting to come up with a number of different challenges. And so all in all, a conservative estimate of engagement as part of this grand challenge process has been 500 plus individuals. I was talking to the directed assembly network on Friday, and from their network, I know they've actually engaged somewhere in excess of 400 people just for that network, moving it forward, so there's lots of community consultation as part of that process. You can read the report, we're just trying to get it re-instigated on the web because I think since the web has been restylised, it's dropped off, but we'll get that back put on the web, and also we've got the physics grand challenge surveys, which is also on the web. And again, my colleague Emma, if I've not stolen too much of her thunder, will take you through some of that work after a tea break. So in terms of strategic university discussions, some of you will be aware that we've had a regular dialogue on shaping capability with senior management in a number of different universities. I would say without question there's been an endorsement from senior management on the principle of shaping. We've shared information as the approach has developed, I can't say we've shared everything on day one, but as the process has evolved, we've certainly been talking with universities, and we've certainly been asking for additional information, certainly we have at the institution I'm involved in. And in confidence, and we can talk about this in a minute, we've been not only kind of thinking about our own investments, but perhaps investments that the university's making, so what's important to a university? Are you setting up another energy centre or nanotechnology centre or materials centre? Let's try and get some kind of intelligence about where the portfolio is going from a university perspective. Clearly universities get many income streams, they might get income from other research councils, many of you do, but also what other funding do you get that we might not be aware about, so industry contracts, and finally a self-evaluation, so where does a university see their own kind of research strengths in terms of the UK? So these have been put into knowledge maps, now this is a stylised version because we did say quite openly with universities that these would be in confidence, so just trying to give a representation of what these knowledge maps might be. But basically they give a ring, like a tree, for each university, and in each university they then have kind of highlighted where they are major players, which is identified by a blue dot, whether they're a significant contributor, which is green, or where they are a contributor, which is this kind of lilicky colour, I think on this screen here, and then round the outside there'll be an orange ring if there is also a research area where they make significant funding from other sources, and if it's a colour with a hatch kind of symbol on it, where the university has strategic intent. So round the outside we have research disciplines, so this might be physics, chemistry, materials for the physical sciences team, but similarly it's been done for all the themes in capability, and then down here it's like on a section would be a particular research area. So there's been quite a lot of work done on that, quite controversial when we started it off, but actually universities are willingly engaged, and maybe as heads of department or heads of faculties, you will have been consulted about what you think are strengths in your own institution. Thinking about business, so EPSRC began a formalised engagement with business as far back as 2000, and I know that because that's one of my first jobs when I was promoted in EPSRC. And so we worked with, trying to work with sectors to better understand user needs for both research and training. The first output back in 2002 were some kind of these black documents, which I think you might find them somewhere hidden in the boughs of a website somewhere, but I've got copies in the office. But here we have an approach where we've tried to kind of put out our understanding of how our research relates to a particular sector. Initially this is very much about a brokerage role because we have a large portfolio of research, a lot of grants that are funded which may be impenetrable to the user to try and find out what research is going on, so we've been working very closely with people when they phone up and say, do you know who might be researching in area X, and we can put people into contact. So the formal list of sectors, maybe quite traditional sectors that we've been working in are listed here, but clearly one of the challenges, particularly say if I take a large sector like the aerospace, is not just understanding what the big primes are actually saying, but also what their suppliers and their secondary and tertiary organisations require. And now 10 years later, we have a number of strategic partners ranging in value and commitments, but I think there are about 28 of them, starting at the letter A with Airbus all the way up to the Wellcome Trust, and again, all the strategic partners are listed on the website. So learning societies, so I hope we have a very good relationship with the learning societies, we've certainly been working with them over a number of years with regular bilaterals. I've listed here the meetings where we were talking about shaping in various forms, but I would like to think that, you know, if I think of going back to international review of chemistry, the action plan, some of the outcomes from that were discussed in a lot of detail with senior management, with the Royal Society of Chemistry, equally with the Institute of Physics when we had the outcome of WACM, I very clearly remember having discussions with them about, you know, what it might mean for the physics community, what can EPSRC do to help, and what were the kind of core messages. So I'm not suggesting that there's any kind of major secret activity that's been undertaken, but this is typical of an ongoing engagement with strategic partners, and I'd like to think that moving forward, that we will continue to work in partnership with those organisations. Clearly in terms of shaping, we've been presenting some of the portfolio and landscape view at these meetings, and certainly there was a meeting of all the learning societies on the 14th of July prior to the announcement of our shaping policy. And finally engagement, so I keep mentioning it because I think I want you to take that message away, but Physical Sciences has had 21 community visits with the community since 2009. They were interactive, they were hopefully consultative, hopefully we were telling you something, hopefully you were telling us something. So typically engagement, again, not uniform because things change over time, but we had an invitation for universities to tell us what their research strengths and weaknesses were, and this was mapping into the 2009 landscapes exercise. We, I did a presentation at all 21 of the current strategy and current priorities of the programme as it was then. We had a choice of workshops, and the most common ones were ones on peer review, early career and impact. We worked very closely because lots of people wanted advice on programme grants, we also had displays where we tried to get information and ideas on where you were working internationally and who you recognise as research leaders within the UK. And finally there were Q and A sessions, I took most of the team to most of the visits, so there was opportunity for one-to-one networking, and I had quite a lot of strategic discussions with senior management while the kind of workshops were taking place. In terms of the landscape... In terms of the landscapes, whilst they were published on the web, we only had about 30 to 40 responses in total. And let's not forget that since April 2009, we have processed about 1600 proposals through the Physical Sciences team, which translates into approximately 5,600 reviews at a conservative estimate. Every review is read by the office, and that's been through 40 or so prioritisation panels. So in terms of the action plans that might come out of the International Review of Chemistry, of Materials, of the WACOM Review of Physics, thinking about the grand challenges and the landscapes, much of this goes through our advisory streams and they've been taken with us as we've undertaken the development of, of the theme, theme area. In terms of shaping, the first kind of priorities where we started to think about some of the challenges we're facing went back at the September 2010 joint meeting with Top Up and SIP. I've been kind of walking through at the pace that I've known the information. So as we've had it, we've shared it with the Strategic Advisory Team, and we have a meeting this Thursday, which I'm sure will be a very interesting meeting and lively discussions there. We're not being insular. Clearly, we have a strong alignment with the healthcare programme, so the healthcare Strategic Advisory Team has also been looking at the Physical Sciences theme as part of their deliberations. Physical Sciences, I'd like to think, has been in a relatively strong position, so we've been presenting as exemplars to the top and up at their meetings. And they were giving us feedback on the types of things we needed to actually understand as part of shaping. And of course, council have been taking oversight of the process on a regular basis. There was also an advocates meeting held with a number of colleagues across the UK on the 24th of May. And some elements of shaping capability have clearly needed further work because we didn't get it right first time. So there was a meeting in November, thinking about E P S R C and its sponsorship role, and actually ongoing portfolio management in a new environment. And quality importance and capacity, which I presented earlier today, again, have been very emotive in actually what, how can you define those things? What is important? What is capacity? So we worked very much with a subset of members to actually try and actually kind of bottom out some of those definitions and potentially the toolkit that we might use to populate the landscape moving forward. So I said at the beginning that shaping is not new for E P S R C. So here are some examples where we have shaped on a research basis, not on a schematic basis. So we've had interdisciplinary research centres, and particularly in my portfolio area, there's been activities in quantum information and biomaterials. I forget, it's probably about eight years ago, E P S R C was very innovative in actually forming a life sciences interface programme to really think about the research that we support at the interface between E P S R C, Engineering Physical Sciences with other parts of the portfolio, and that's been extremely successful. We've been signposting research, so here we've formed policy about research areas that are important in the past. And so we've had physics with L S I, we currently have matter far from equilibrium, and we also have control of self-assembly. And following on from the International Review, for example, where there was concern about actually how much outreach the chemistry community was doing, we had a big pitch to try and get communities to think more broadly than their own research portfolio. So this is just sort of like a, an, a set of examples of things that have been happening on quite a regular basis. So identifying the future shape. So you'll know by now that E P S R C has come up with three categories. Grow, where a research area will be grown relative to other areas in the portfolio. That's quite important in a falling budgetary envelope. Maintain, research will be maintained relative to other areas, and reduce, it will be reduced relative to other areas in the portfolio. Quite clearly, we will not be stopping, as is sometimes the perception I've heard, research funding in an area that's reduced. A reduced area is equally important to the programme in terms of capability as some of the grow areas. Part of it is nudging and aligning the programme to get the best use of the investments that we have available. And equally, just because it's a grow area does not mean to say it's an easy ride. There will still be a lot of pressure on the peer review process to make sure only the very best research proposals are supported. But in all these three areas, we may be encouraging some focus to think about actually what are the main priorities that we see as a theme. And as we've said repeatedly, but just to stress it again, that the changes will take gradually over time as the portfolio gets refreshed. We're not doing anything major to the existing investments that are already out there. So some examples of strategies. So what would be a realistic kind of approach in, in shaping? And this is still very much work in progress. But so example for cold atoms and molecules, which is an area that we've identified for reduce, there's clearly, because of the capital limitations, a focus around where we've made our previous investments. We can't afford new capital in new places. So therefore, it seems to us quite reasonable to think about investing our resources where the facilities already exist. Bringing expertise together, and so here, you know, I could use examples like Supergem that the engineering programme done, where consortium building is actually, again, nothing new for E P S R C, but getting the right expertise together to tackle research challenges is something that's well within, I think, the responsibility of research councils. And focus towards key research in quantum optics, which is something else that we, we've published as a strategy, is recognizing that there's a very interrelated portfolio, and actually, you can't just reduce something in isolation. You have to think about the consequences of that and where you might your additional investments to be. So again, a question that gets, gets asked, so what's actually changed as a result of engagement? So I'd like to think we've had a, a pretty good awareness of our portfolio. So there hasn't been too much change, but there has been some change. So for example, antihydrogen, which was an area that was severely at risk prior to the spending review because of the levels of cuts that we were facing, we were having to make decisions about whether that would be an area that we could maintain or whether we should be stopping it. Because actually, in an international environment, and we have one key group in, or two key groups in the UK, what is our role in supporting that? But I think when we actually shared with our Strategic Advisory Team the level of investment, there were kind of recognition through things like Physics World Breakthrough of the Year, it was in Nature, and then actually looking at the portfolio, when you see actually much of the, the investment will take that group through till 2014, it was quite easy to actually come to the conclusion with, with, with advice that actually it should be a maintain portfolio. But when we're facing cuts, one has to actually think about the portfolio in that kind of area. If we take graphene, again, prior to the Nobel Prize, we already had it on our radar as a grow area because obviously we're very successful at that, and E P S R C has made significant investments in terms of science innovation awards. But actually, again, on discussion with, with, with colleagues outside of the office, we understood better the relationship of graphene and its fundamental starting point on carbon-based nano-materials. Looking at the previous investments and actually where there's a capacity, capacity to naturally grow it at a rate that might be qualified by the grow, we've kind of merged these areas together, and it's now a maintain category. If I take catalysis as grow area, I think when we've been talking to people, we've had our evidence kind of confirmed, our, our understanding. So actually, the, the definition has remained the same. But as a course of the dialogue and actually working with the community, as is the case in a couple of the examples, the definitions have been strengthened to better represent the portfolio. So taking all that evidence together and bringing it together, this is the final outcome that we've come up with. This shows the, the mapping of work in progress. You'll know by now whether you're a green dot, a pinky dot, or an orange dot, or a blue dot, waiting for further instruction from the office. But clearly, again, this, this, this has to come from the, I think, from the Strategic Advisory Team, where they pushed us very hard about the relationships between one area and another. So what, you know, being alert to actually what changes you might make here and, and the impact it has on these other research areas was a very important part of the discussion process. And so that's the kind of work we've been doing. We've made some assessments, and that's the kind of starting point. They're quite crude in terms of the size of the circles because some research areas are very small and some are very large, but to, for management purposes, there are kind of just three sizes of circles there. But this is kind of the product of a lot of those deliberations over the last two years. But Physical Sciences are not just doing it themselves. There are shaping and understanding going across the whole portfolio. So I've already established that we've been working with the healthcare team as well as manufacturing and energy, but this is an exemplar which you'll also find on the website, that actually, they've kind of looked at their portfolio in terms of technologies, and they're listed here. But within each of these technologies, they will link the research themes, sub-themes in the capability part of the programme. So you will see a consistent view across the portfolio. So you will not find Physical Sciences growing something and another part of the portfolio reducing it. Basically, if it's a grow for, for a programme, for a theme area, it's a grow for the organisation, and vice versa, if it's a maintain, it's a maintain for the, for the organisation as It's a dynamic process. This is where we are. We've mapped the research portfolio and we've identified the direction of research areas. Nothing will happen until we get proposals coming into the portfolio and thinking about the future of, of replenishing that. Of course, new ideas will come in from left field, and I can't think of a single peer review panel that hasn't been amazed by a, a left-field idea. I think they welcome those ideas coming into the panel. So we'll get proposal development and we'll still get input through our peer review process. The, the portfolio will evolve as we populate new grants. Those, those blob diagrams are probably already out of date because they were taken on data back in October 2010. And of course, as, as the portfolio evolves, we'll be updating and thinking about what the map of the research portfolio is telling us and any future direction we need to set. And so an example, and I think just to clarify the understa, perhaps misunderstanding the community, so where we are at the moment in terms of synthetic organic chemistry, there were a large stimulus of investing, which it says on the website, back in 2007 and 2008. And those grants are still current, and that's what forms 44.4 million pounds of the portfolio. Those grants will start finishing towards the beginning of next year and through 2012. The current replenishment rate of grants in that area through competitive peer, peer review is less than what was commissioned two or three years ago. So the, the portfolio will naturally fall as part of that replacement and refreshment process. What will be clear as well, but just because it's falling doesn't mean to say we wouldn't be doing something with that area already, because I think as we've kind of picked up in some of the reviews, there's still lots of opportunity for that research area to work on the challenge themes. And that's why one of the focuses is part of looking about how we can get synthetic chemist, organic chemistry into the challenge programmes. So moving forward, and I'm nearly done, council has agreed that we will release the rest of the physical, the rest of the, the categories in two phases, and will be completed by March 2012. Subject to council just reviewing that in October, following the recent letter from the learning societies, but at the moment, I shall assume where we are is where we're going. And we believe Physical Sciences will pretty much be in place to release the rest of our areas in the next phase. We've been working very hard over the last 12 weeks or so since the last publication to move forward with the rest of the areas. And so we have intention, but of course, subject to quality assurance and actually thinking about have we got it all right, that will be something that we plan to do in November. So there's still lots of opportunities for you to submit evidence. We've requested it already with the learning societies and universities. By mid-October would be most helpful, but as on the previous slide, it's a dynamic process, so if we miss something major, it's something that we can act on. And then once we've published in November, we'll hope to continue our engagement more formally with the community because actually, a lot of the intelligence we get is part of our community visits with grant holders and with research teams. And you should also expect further engagement, not just from Physical Sciences, but from other parts of the portfolio, because it's not just Physical Sciences that's shaping, it's the whole portfolio. So if your area or your research is applicable to the other themes, you should be taking account of what those, those themes are doing as well. So as I already mentioned, that dynamic kind of circular diagram, we're at A at the moment, which is the current landscape. B is where we're heading. But actually, the key thing is that B is not just an E P S R C choice or fashion, it's clearly there to try and think about what are the best long-term needs of users, and we need to facilitate that through our UK research programme. We need to be resilient to make sure that we can respond to new changes, so we're not in the process of locking something down for good. We need to think about actually how we continue to do that. And I can assure you, and I'm sure the SAT members will, hopefully won't mind me saying, is they keep me honest, they keep saying, well, what about this community? What about early career researchers? Can we keep a monitor on it? So part of what we do is monitor what's happening in the portfolio to get early alert if things are perhaps not going as we plan. And clearly, continuing the excellence with impact is kind of the watchword of the portfolio as well. So that needs peer review. There are some changes, there's lots of probably angst in the community about what that really means. But what is known, and what is not known is probably helpful to think about it. So the knowns are there will be a change to the application process where researchers will be able to write down not only about how excellent their research is, but also why it's nationally important. Now, many of you do that already, particularly if you come in for a larger research investment, be it critical mass programme grant, platform grant, or even a training centre. You would have had to have said why it was important nationally. So this is formalizing something that should be happening as part of best practice. So that will be happening from autumn onwards. Our portfolio will be quite open and transparently placed on the web for you to actually understand where we think it is. And again, I think as we've said on some of the visits we've been out there, it's a debate. You can tell people in your research proposal why you think your research is important, and peer review and scientific review will have that debate with you as part of the So just to summarize what I said at the beginning, I hope I've shown you that we're an organisation that continually engages with the research community. There's not been some magic thing that we've done in the last two months, it's been an ongoing process. We've brought together different streams, some of it contextual, some of it, some of it through discussion, some of it based on our own portfolio, and some of it based on portfolio from other research funders. We have to think about not just Physical Sciences as a theme on its own in isolation, we are part of an interconnected landscape. Setting priorities is not new for the organisation. We've been doing it as a programme, as a theme for the last three years or so, but we continue to do that across the whole of the organisation. And there is no secret and magic document that we've, we've had. We've been looking at all of those evidence that are out in the community, and if you've got something that you think will help this process, then we're more than ready to receive that as we move forward. If you want more information, it will be here on the website. That should be your first starting point on anything. You just need to click on these interactive buttons, and they'll take you to the part of the portfolio you're interested in. And thank you very much for your attention. We've got some discussion to have now, so if I just like to, I invite the panel back up to the podium, and then we can take it forward. Thank you very much.